Gentlemen and ladies, ladies, gentlemen. We'll call everybody who's here it looks like. Additionals to the agenda?
There are some additions in personnel and in consent agenda.
And approve and correct the minutes from August 9th, 2016, regular school meeting. Or wait, need to adopt agenda first. Are you open? So we got a motion from Cheryl. Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Now we can go to approve and correct the minutes from the August 9th, 2016 regular school meeting. They're in your packets. How many can motion only approve for minutes? I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Kala. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Financial reports, July 2016 trajectory report. You have some of those in your packet and I think you gave us some additional ones. You out of the norm, Bob?
No, I don't think so. I've managed not to run into any of that for sure.
That's really a good thing.
This time of the year is a good thing.
How many can motion only approve the graduate's report? I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Kala. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. All right, audit and approval of the bill. We have additional July bills in 2016 and then August bills in 2016. And assuming that Cheryl, you had the opportunity to determine, today or this week, to have a...
Yes, I did. There was nothing out of the ordinary. Everything was either pre-approved or normal operating expenses. And we made down payment on the netting for the stadium playground and it sounds like they got that netting in, but it's not in place yet.
That's correct. It's in, but they have not yet gotten up over the plate on it. So they do intend to do that, I think, not too long.
And the summer programs have been done and the bills for the painting on the parking lots, which was, they were very normal, everything. We did get the bill and paid for the buzz-in and camera systems. And it sounds like they're all in place and operating. I'm not positive about the buzz-ins, they're in place, but I'm not sure if they're operating yet, but they're ready to go.
That was at the high school again?
It'll be at the high school, correct. It'll be one by the community ed and then one by the band area that's worked by a newly born adult and one at the main door.
And refresh my memory, what is the goal then at the beginning of the school year?
It should be in place and operational at the beginning of the school year.
So everybody's going to be coming either into the front door to start with or how do you do?
Yeah, they'll have to be buzzed in to the front door. Now, having said that, at the beginning of the school day, it won't be running until once the kids get in, then it'll be put in place and then once that happens, then everybody will have to get buzzed in to the building.
Does faculty have keys to get in?
Faculty has locks to still get in.
Okay.
And everything else seems to be normal operating expenses and that being said, I would more be happy to mess.
Okay, I got a motion from Cheryl. Second from Lou. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Consent agenda, looks like we have two under the consent agenda. The first one is review and consider approval of the sixth class assignment for 2016-17 school year. And that would be Todd Spanier, Don Knoll, and Phil Carlson. And then the other one would be review and consider approval of the following athletic assignments for the 2016 school year. And that's the seventh and eighth grade cross-country. And that's Jeff Swatsky.
Two of the sixth class assignments were for math. We put those in place partway through the year, at least one of them partway through the year, another one we had put in for Don partway through the year and then we'll be starting here with all three of those six grade assignments. As part of what math is looking at is continuing to improve immediately with our students. And then for the cross-country, we're grateful that we have more students participating, which will allow us to bring another coach on.
So I got a motion from Heidi.
Second.
And I was second from Kala. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. All right. Business, just remember, anybody in the audience, if you have any questions, concerns regarding the business part of it, please just raise your hand or give us a little nod and we can call on you if you have any questions. So the first business items, review and consider approval of a contract for mental health counselors, a service for True Balance for a maximum budget of $15,150 for the 2015 school year.
And that budget is made up of cooperative budget that we're using and some of our general fund. It's a little bit higher because we got a little bit more from the co-op. We left our budget the same, so I think it's a little less than $1,000 bucks higher for this year, but we do have a lot of students that need and use those services.
And how many days a week do we get?
I think we get a couple of days a week or two and a half days for the time.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second it.
I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Number two, review and consider approval of the teaching school faculty handbook for the 2016-17 school year.
On all three of the handbooks, there really aren't any changes. I think you got one sort of cover notice on that information, but it's mainly either new staff or new type of schedule or just date changes, nothing that I would consider to be significant changes for the handbooks.
Yeah, can I just point out one thing I noticed when I did not talk to Mr. Orline, but in the parent student handbook for the elementary school, the mission thirty, I noticed a date that says April 27th, 1993, and I just wondered about that date. Because we have our new mission and belief statements and I just kind of wondered about that.
We're a little out of line on this, but I guess I started that by saying that there were no changes. I'll get the board an answer that, Mr. Orline, be at the next board meeting, so he can address that particular piece.
Do we approve each one individually?
I talked to him a little time earlier.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the elementary school faculty handbook.
So I got a motion from Kala. Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of the elementary student parent handbook for the 2016-17 school year.
Motion to approve that?
Okay, I got a motion from Kala and a second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of the district's paraprofessional handbook for the 2015-16 school year.
Motion to approve that? I'll second.
I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of a teaching sharing agreement for Natalie Luch, agriculture instructor with Rorory School District for the 2015-16 school year.
We've been doing this for a number of years now. I'm not sure about many.
I lost count.
Quite a few years. We're adding a little bit more time to her. I think in the past it's kind of in two trimesters, I think, and we've added the third now.
One or two.
One or two, so I think it's all three trimesters now, so there's a little bit more time to it and I think Natalie agreed, I think it's just been a great cooperation between us and her board.
Make a motion to approve.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion from Heidi and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of QCOM application plan for the Panesville Area School District starting for the 2016-17 school year.
And there are some things with this plan that we will upgrade on a regular basis and some paperwork that we certainly need to do with MDE because it's certainly been a cooperative piece between the teachers and administration. I think Mary can verify that. They've been involved in this all the way through the whole process. They have already voted to approve before we can kind of make this final. We also need to do it, but I need to send some items that Mary has given me to MDE to make it permanent place. Just remember to, reminder to the board that these are from MDE dollars. We are, although we could levy some dollars for the QCOM plan, we are not doing that. So this is, these are dollars that if we don't use, we'll go to another district to use. All right. There are just a few pieces that I'll point out. There's a number of pieces to this. One is the alternative, if you look at the first page of exhibit E, alternative teacher professional pay system, the really the steering committee for this. So it starts with that, it talks about the members, and then it goes through hiring process, evaluation process, and the compensation, all right? That's one of the pieces that we're going to be adding. And there's an academy coach, there's two of those, and again, it talks about qualifications, responsibilities, hiring process, evaluation process for that position. And we'll be posting all these positions for staff members at the start of the school year. I know that Mary's going to meet and other members, leadership of EMA and members of the committee that helped to put this plan together, they're going to meet with all teachers at the beginning of the school year, they'll answer any questions. I know Diane has been part of that committee, they'll answer any questions that the teachers have or the staff have for this. We're in the process of putting together kind of an implementation manual now. It will also be clear and hopefully concise to answer any questions that the staff members would have. So we have data coach, that's a point two of that position, will be paid through these funds. And again, we'll circle the same thing again, responsibilities, hiring process, evaluation process, and compensation. For the mentor teacher, that will be as needed. If we have a new teacher that comes into it, then that particular piece will go into place. It talks about, goes through the same process. Technology specialist, a point two of the teacher's position will be paid through that. Same type of thing, and all these positions will be open to anybody, you need licensed staff in the district. Then we have the site coordinator, so we want those in each building, it goes through the same process. And at the end, it talks about core component job embedded professional development. It talks about some goals for efficiency for the students that we'd like to see. And then on the last piece, then it also talks about professional learning communities, mentoring program, core components for the teacher evaluation, which is a key component to this, is the evaluation process for the staff members. And then on the last page, I guess second last page before it was signed off by the commissioner, talks about core component, performance pay and alternative salary schedule. It kind of goes through additional things that are things that teachers need to do as far as meeting goals. And other pieces as far as for school-wide staff achievement gains, if they hit those, they get a certain amount of compensation for that. Measures the student growth, certain amount of compensation for that. It talks about it on this page, teacher observation and evaluation, being able to be at the appropriate level for that. And then also professional responsibilities. And that piece was kind of put in place to help make sure we get all our staff members very involved in the education of students and various committees. Anything you would add or Mary?
The only thing I can say is that we kind of, it was things that we were doing already anyway, so it was a good way to just get reimbursed for things. And I think like Bob said right at the end, it's a good way to get other members to step up for leadership committees that aren't getting done, because now they are required to put in so many committee hours.
This is, the whole QCOM piece is put in place to help with staff development. It's all about really helping our teachers get better, which has the impact of helping us do an achievement. This is really meant to be a good thing for our licensed staff and the school district. They're both gained from this plan. So I think a lot of time and effort's been put into it. I think it's a great plan for everybody. Can't say that we won't find some bugs in there that we need to clean up, but every year we can go back and we can reevaluate how things work and we can tweak it a little bit to make sure that it continues to get better and better and help staff and help the district as much as possible. Like I said, no hidden agendas on this one, it is meant to be good for both.
But the net add is its best for the students.
Correct.
So when is the deadline that we have to have these individuals identifying and put in place?
We'll put it in place. We have to have everything kind of going by October 1st. I think at their meeting, they're going to talk about the whole process and we have some forms put together already for teachers to fill out, our licensed staff to fill out if they're interested in it. If there's only one person, that'll kind of solve that issue to some degree, but if there's multiple for openings, then we'll put the committee together and we'll pick the best candidate for the position. And we have a process in place for that, too. The handbook that we're doing will just help guide this a little bit better, and we're working on that now. But we also want to make sure that all the teachers have all their questions answered, the licensed staff at that meeting, and that will help us, give us a better understanding of what we need to beef up in kind of the implementation manual.
Now, is this something that has to be approved by the board then?
It does.
Okay.
You don't approve it, this ends.
The QCOM, yeah, but I mean the hiring process.
Oh, no, the hiring process, no, the board will not need to be involved in that. I think we have processes in place that will clearly substantiate that.
That's what I thought, but I would just clarify.
So no, this really is kind of the end of the board, other than, I think, when we go through the world's best workforce plan and our test scores and all of those things that now we need to do, this will be one more piece that we will inform the board on how it's working, so you'll get an update as it develops and as it kind of changes and gets better. But we believe that we have a very good start to this. I think that I would commend the committee, because I think they've put a lot of time in it, I think they've put a lot effort in, and I think they've produced a very good document. Can't thank them enough.
I'll make a motion that we approve the QCOM plan.
I'll second that.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Kala. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review the development of parental involvement policy, Title I program policy 612.1.
Yeah, this is a mandated policy that we need to put in place. This will be the first reading, so we'll at least go to a second reading and a third reading if the board sorties sides. Really, the purpose, if you take a look at, and you've had these policies in place, it's brand new, so it's not a matter that there are changes to it. It is built off of the MSBA model policy, so that's where it comes from. Mr. Orline, who really works with the Title I programs, has gone through this, taken a close look, and really in essence, he's saying he's really doing all that stuff right now. So there really won't be a lot of changes to what he's already doing, but now this meets the needs for us to get that mandatory policy in place. If you just read the first piece, it talks about the purposes of policies to encourage and facilitate involvement by parents of students participating in Title I and the educational programs and experiences of the students. That's really what this policy addresses. It talks about the general statement, the development of policy, you know, the development of the school levy level policy, it talks about all those things. So I learned a long time ago not to read to you something that you're capable of reading. So if there's no questions, then we'll just move on and it'll be the first reading. This will come back at the next board meeting, and at that point, I may have considered approving the policy, but it will really be up to the board. If the board has questions and stuff, I would certainly recommend that, it goes to a third reading if necessary. Any questions the board might have?
Well, we share as a policy committee, the three of us, and a policy like this is a lot from the Minnesota School Board Association. Just because for us to invent one of these things and cover everything, we're, we use them a lot, and this one is, is the same as theirs, isn't that correct?
That's, it is built strictly out of that. I don't, I'm not worried, any changes we made to this policy, other than taking away some of the footnotes that they put in there that aren't necessary.
We just want to do, consider this as the first reading?
Yep.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to number eight, review the protection and privacy of pupil records policy, 515.
Now, this policy we already have in place, I think it was in nine, or 2006, I think, is when the last time they looked at this policy. This is really an important policy, it talks about protection and privacy of pupil records. This one's important. Do take, not that any policy isn't, but this one can get you in trouble really quick. So do take the time, it's a lengthy policy, so my recommendation to the board is that you look at this as the first reading, so that it gives the board more time to relook at or reread it. The copy that I gave you had the changes highlighted, so you would know where the differences between the two policies are. So you can certainly concentrate more on those, because that's where the changes are or the new language is. Any dabby questions, certainly I would suggest stop by the office, we go over any particular point that you have that's question, that you have questions on. But like I said, I think I would take this at least as the first reading, goes to a second reading, and because of the length of this policy, you might even want to go to a third reading to make sure that everybody's had the chance to take a good look at it. Again, it is built off of the model policy for MSBA. Any questions on anything so far on this? Otherwise, I'd certainly say, send me an email, the policy committee, as Bruce has mentioned, has looked at this policy. So it's kind of gone to the appropriate channels for that.
So we're about on to review of personnel then. Review and consider approval of the following van driver's assignments. Percy Volovic and Brenda Katkowski. Percy is for four hours today and Brenda's for 3.5 hours.
And those certainly are approximate hours, because some of the driving during the winter can be interesting, as Luke can probably attest to.
Do you have anything? I'll make a motion that we approve.
Can I have one question?
Sure.
I know the one is going probably to Cosmos, where's the other driver?
One is going to...
Cosmos, for sure.
Oh, the one's going to Wilmer. We don't have the one for Cosmos yet, I don't believe. No, we're still short a driver. So in fact, we are intending to talk to the bus company to see, because we just haven't been able to buy one so far, so we may check with the bus company and see if the bus company has, at least for untemporary basis, the ability to put that Cosmos.
Where's this one going then?
One goes to Wilmer and the other one goes to, it's just special, oh, that's right. The other one is just special and shorter routes are on. You know, because when we went to the bus company, if you remember, these were bus routes, we gave the bus company routes that we knew would be in place, that we knew that would not disappear. For some of these routes, if we lose the students for those particular routes, then the routes would just disappear and be terminated.
Well, wasn't the student going to Cosmos of age?
No, we weren't sure if the student was coming back, I believe, so, but our understanding is that we do have a student for the road. Now we just need a van driver for it.
Certainly a nice piece of bread.
Every day, at least.
I think it's the one.
Forty below.
Bruce, you might have a little extra time in there. Before you get to work.
When I hear it that way, it's kind of like, man, this is really nice.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I got a motion from Heidi.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? All in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of the resignation request from Eileen Rider Food Service effective August 16th, 2016.
We, I want to take the opportunity, she's going to retire, I do want to take the opportunity to thank her. She has put a lot of time into this district and has done a fantastic job. So we absolutely thank her and wish her the best on her next adventure. We probably will take the opportunity to reevaluate everything now. You know, one of the reasons that I brought Penny on board is to take a look at our whole food service program, look for efficiencies, things that we might be able to change to make us more efficient. So when I come back to the board, it may not be for a position like Eileen's, it may be for a different position. In fact, right now, we're probably looking more at a cook position than we are at the position that she held. So, and I've mentioned to the board before, you know, we also need to do something, MDE came out in one of their pieces that they said is we really need to have somebody in charge for our food service. So I'll be talking to both head cooks about that and to see what kind of interests there are, or there is for our head cooks, and then we'll come back to the board with a recommendation on which direction we should, at least I feel we should go.
I'll move, we approve.
I got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Kala. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider, no, review and consider approval of an increase, Lisa Liches, preschool readiness teacher FTE from .66 FTE to .94 FTE's effective August 29th, 2016.
This is really cause because we went to five days. When we moved there, we needed to increase hours.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review and consider approval of increase in Amy Jo Davey teacher FTE from .828 FTEs to 1.0 FTE effective August 29th, 2016.
This has always been an adventure with Amy Jo, it depends on the grants that we've gotten. The reason that we reduced her part of it was because the CESI grant disappeared. Now we have the grant back, so we're suggesting, recommending that we bring her back using the grant offers that we had previously.
So Luke?
And a motion from Cheryl. Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry.
And just so you were, because I did actually check on this one, Mark, the CESI grant, so I just want to make sure that I do say it's the coordinated early intervention services grant. I didn't want any doubts on that after name, so.
Good. Yeah. Number five, review and consider approval of Amy Spanier paraprofessional, 4.25 hours per week, four days per week, effective August 29th, 2016.
And this is to replace a previous position that we have. So it's not a new position, it's just building a vacant position.
So...
I got a motion from Heidi.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carry. Number six, review and consider hiring Jacqueline Gruber as a clause program assistant for up to an average of 7.5 hours per week effective September 6th, 2016 through May 31st, 2017.
And just a reminder that these positions vary a little bit depending on the needs that we have. that we have, and all of these are for the POS program.
Hold.
I got a motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign and carry. Review and consider hiring Valerie Miller as a POS program assistant for up to an average of eleven hours per week, effective September sixth two thousand sixteen through May thirty first two thousand seventeen. I got a motion from Heidi.
Second.
Second from Kella. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign and carry. Review and consider hiring Sue Teicher as a POS program assistant for up to an average of five hours per week, effective August sixth two thousand sixteen through May very first two thousand seventeen.
So Lou?
I got a motion from Cheryl. Second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign and carry. Review and consider hiring Jeannie Hogg or A, or number nine, oh, I'm sorry, review and consider hiring Wanda Hazy or Hazi as a POS program assistant for up to an average of six hours per week, effective September sixth two thousand sixteen through May thirty first two thousand seventeen.
So Lou?
I got a motion from Kella and a second from Heidi, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign and carry. Now, number ten, review and consider hiring Jeannie Hogg or A as a POS program assistant for up to an average of six hours per week, effective September sixth two thousand sixteen through May thirty first two thousand seventeen.
So Lou?
I got a motion from Cheryl. Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign and carry. Informational reports, policies committee, Cheryl.
We, the policy committee did the meeting and we already discussed two of the policies that have been in the first readings here, we also discussed the hiring guidelines, which although they're not a policy, are board approved. And we, the question was whether or not to keep them board approved or whether we should just put them in as guidelines and there would be a process to do this. And the general consensus among the three board members was that we leave them board approved because they were put that way in the past for a reason and although we don't really have that reason anymore, we are hesitant to change it at this moment because there's no real reason to do it. So we're, the consensus was to leave them board approved, but we did discuss making a couple of wording changes to make them a little more user friendly and also to change the hundred point plans to be more appropriate for each hiring guideline, for each different area. Hiring a cook isn't the same as hiring a custodian.
There's a rubric that the board had approved that was really more put in place for teachers versus other groups. It becomes cumbersome when we try to force that square tag into their own hole because it wasn't built specifically for that. So the intent of administration is to come back to the board with rubrics for each different group, might be a few changes on the guidelines themselves and then ask for the board to approve again.
This will be approved and brought forward in the future, but that is the other one that we discussed at the meeting. That's about it.
Okay, thank you Cheryl. Administrative negotiation, Bruce?
Well, we had a meeting. I would call it information only at this point and we'll probably continue some discussions.
And just for clarification, do you say administration negotiation, who's that for?
Superintendent.
Okay, thank you. All right. Number three, administrative reports from Robert Hewitt.
Just a few quick things. Just a reminder that teacher workshops are on Monday, August twenty ninth, Tuesday, August thirtieth, and Wednesday, August thirty first, the open house is on August thirty first that Wednesday, that's a little different, typically we've been Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I think it was a great idea on the part of staff to say, let's look at Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I think that was a great move. The open house will stay on, and I don't know why we didn't think of it before, but we just didn't think of it before, and the open house will stay on Wednesday, it's from five to seven thirty. Just a reminder that we start on Monday at seven forty-five in the lunch area, just to welcome back the staff members, so there's some treats there and then we'll move into the auditorium for a little bit more of an official welcome back to the staff. All of our members are certainly, certainly welcome to attend, in fact, I would encourage that, but I do understand that some things do come up. School starts the day after Labor Day, which is Tuesday, September sixth. Summer appears to have gone. As Cheryl had mentioned, we have gotten the poles up in the playground by the stadium, but we still have to put the net up. I think it'll look nice when it's done and I think it'll be much safer, I'm very grateful that, you know, the baseball tournament went very well, I think, but, and no one got hurt with that, and next time we have a tournament like that, or even our own baseball games, the netting will come to the playground so that less chance of students or young ones getting, getting hurt with the ball fall. They've started on the elementary school gym, they're hoping to get it done by the start of the school year. They're looking to paint the line soon, but then that'll take some time to dry and they still have to get the coating on top, so it'll be close, they believe it'll be done, but I think either way, close enough so that we can adapt to what we need to adapt to make it work. Checked with the city today, I've been a little nervous about the resurfacing of the roads by the elementary school. Every day I worry a little bit more. I did talk to the city and they, they're looking at Wednesday and Thursday this week, hopefully to get that piece done. It's just that, once we get the staff back, it will be a little bit of a mess if everybody has to park in the surrounding areas and try to walk across the road that they're trying to resurface, so keeping my fingers crossed that they'll get it done. As I mentioned before, at board meetings, Bright Arrow is our new parent notification system, we have a couple more things to do, then I will send a message out to all our parents as a test and try to catch any glitches that we have before we start entering into the winter season. That's all I have.
All right, thank you Bob. Any other board chair?
I'll move to here.
Okay, I got a motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. By aye. Pull the same sign and carry.